Hello. All orders are at local for our issue 2025 regular bill order. We have a local for Ralph.
Trustee Hallwax, here, trustee listener.
Here.
Trustee Neil Allofs.
Here.
Trustee, here, trustee Rubin, trustee Scott.
Here.
President.
Here. We have Lauren. And we're listening to the floor for. We are not live streaming this meeting tonight, but the video recording will be available on the village YouTube link. Before we finish the next, I just want to apologize, we had a busy whole meeting. Long and that's why we're going to end today, so I apologize if everybody got here and didn't start right. First item on the agenda is consideration of minutes, the minutes. For the trust meeting in April of the eighth, the committee of all, or the regular meeting in April 17th, previously circulated award published in community. Well, if there aren't any questions or corrections, did there about group minutes?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded all favor.
My.
And to approve, next item on the agenda is public comment. This is where we allow members of the public to address the village board on a topic that is not, that is within our purview jurisdiction, but it's not listed by other item. If you would like to speak of our matter, it is listed on the agenda, we'll ask you to wait until the agenda is small, we'll give you an opportunity to speak then. If your matter is on a consent agenda, please let us know if you'd like us to. For who is for consent agenda, say you thought. Anyone who wants to speak could fill out a witness speaker form located in the back of the room, submit it to the village manager, this guy. This time now, public comment is intended as an opportunity to make comments to the village board. Will listen to everything you have to say, but this is not ordinarily a time for discussion or engagement by us. If appropriate, may I ask the village manager or other village staff to respond to questions or issues raised at a later date? All speakers are limited to three minutes, to be fair, all strictly enforced the three-minute rule. Per our status policy, we'll limit all public comments to a total of thirty minutes. We ask that all speakers be respectful, civil and non-repetitive. We ask that all members of the audience refrain from flouting or making any other comments during the time anyone is speaking. Finally, please be sure to speak directly into the microphone, so everyone can hear you. With that, are there any non-agenda public? And and here, Katie and Dan.
Hello. Do I go here?
Come on up. So if you can tell us who you are, and then.
Alright, thank you, thanks for having me, my name is Katie Hulley, and I am a resident that resides on Wesley Road. I'm here today to discuss relocating the new entrance and exit of the Planko Golf Course for safety improvements. Residents have raised serious concerns regarding the proposed entrance of Planko Golf Course. Signing significant safety risks for pedestrians, including children, cyclists, and golf course patrons to an already existing unsafe conditions. The renovation of the golf course will introduce increased traffic to an already narrow residential street. Amplifying hazards that already exist and causing new threats to community well-being. Key safety concerns are including but not limited to lack of safe access for pedestrians and cycles, cyclists. There is no designated space for non-vehicle access, creating risk for walkers, again including children, and bikers sharing the roadway. Existing traffic hazards by design. The road leading to the course is narrowing downhill with poor traffic control. Vehicles frequently speed, run the stop sign, and occupy the middle of the road, conditions that will only worsen with increased traffic. There have been close calls reported by patrons and neighbors underscoring the urgent need for change. There are distracted, inattentive, and even impaired drivers. Drivers often rush to make left or leave the course while distracted, i.e. using cars. And there are concerns of impaired driving post-call, including five hundred and eighty vehicles. These behavioral risks magnify the physical dangers of the current street configuration. Proposed improvements. One is to relocate the entrance and exit, shift the main access point to the corner of Fairfield and Wesley. And then to conduct two risk assessments, one a traffic study, and two a. I'm sorry. Relating to increased consumption of alcohol, given that there will now be a sports bar in the best space. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We hear you, I can't. What you could change this, but I do want to assure you that staff is looking at this. That will continue to be viewed, our experts will see what would be appropriate. For. What I can.
Appreciate.
Any other public comment? That, let's go to the next item on the agenda, which is reports of committees. The first report is the committee of the whole, and I think that we just had the committee of the whole meeting across the hall. The preservation commission, the preservation commission. Is concerned that we have many teardowns of the shore. Protection, shore, or our actually the houses, and they made a number of proposals for how to deal with it. And following this, the board, and we continue looking at that, if the people towards deciding whether there are changes that should make for building voters. The next item on the agenda is the sustainability committee, or narrowly, trustee Rubin, would you back? Town, so I'll ask our. National officer, that you feel is caring, that you are.
Thank you, our meeting. After the baseball fans leaving, the committee discussed the monthly donation reports for the month of April. General on voting performance for a number of the village's driving courses, exceeding monthly budget targets prior to receipt. Including income taxes, building permits, telecom tax, cable franchise fees, and storage debt. The water line also has drawn them, the total revenue in the city budget. We also took that the village semi-annual that service season plan for the agenda for approval. And also talked about a number of changes to prioritize for capital projects, especially for twenty twenty-five. The committee also discussed the first phase of the village's investment portfolio, and then they'll update the meeting to be where our ultimately knowledge of the village has more data. It is reported that this portfolio is meant to earn interest over a short period of time, but we find there's the portfolio invested very uncertainly. The committee also made changes to the village's purchasing policy that are proposed, which include an increase to purchase authority implements in line of information. We do have a contract of our policy, and clarify that it was a medium used to give the village a new access. Lastly, the committee also discussed the proposed global birthday talks ordinance, dividing the agenda later to make concessions.
Thanks for that straightforward report. The next item on the agenda is report on the plan commission and trustee list characters are represented. We're getting more about this, but it's just a small phone, the trustee listener, this is for last meeting. So I'm going to try and memorize everything.
Well, that one will be easy, because actually the plan commission did not meet within the past month, so I'm going to report.
Revenue is the source of all. Next report on the agenda is the golf advisory committee, trustee Hallwax, I represent that trustee Hallwax.
Thank you, April began slowly in cold and wet weather. Weather turned in the month of the surpassed budget, also to note your payroll saved, saving seasonal staff due to the slow start. Prep work that took place throughout the month, anticipation of downshift above house. Kitchen equipment sold, which includes the oven, fire, grill, which smothered in the sink. And then refrigerators or freezer relocated, the main stillings support the temporary kitchen, or obviously the food shop, which is looking out well. Many items were also nominated in the cycle. A new shed was reported installed near the range, inserted the extra storage space during the construction of the new pub house. And then a twenty-one thirty sentence person will be installed next to the temporary or food truck added, for added shade and protection from the elements. And now to the cereal for the, it's on Monday, for the, for the new, for the new, new truck.
Thanks very much for that report. Next report is the sustainability task force, and trustee Mr. Baloplos is going to be our representative, we'll follow some.
Thank you. At the last, the sustainability task force meeting on April twenty-two, we heard a presentation about the new Hefty Renewal program. Hefty is partnered with the solid waste agency of Northern Cook County to introduce a new curbside recycling option for our residents. Residents can place difficult to recycle plastic, like styrofoam containers, or plastic wrapping into special orange bags, and then place those into a curbside, into their curbside recycling cart. The orange bags will then be separated from the other materials and assorted facility. The special orange, we have the new bags are available for purchase at several area stores such as school, Costco, and Ace Hardware Stores. We're very excited about this new recycling option, and the village will be publicizing, publicizing this to our residents. Next, the annual building and recycle drop-off event will be Saturday, May thirtieth, at the Metro Southeast lot from ten AM to one. Many of the same outlets will be in attendance this year, and we will accept a variety of other materials. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, May twenty-seven, at seven PM. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next, up is the council for repealing the community in front of Scott, he's our representative.
Thank you, I'm the county commissioner, community met on March three. On basement, to discuss upcoming events and recent work of the council. The GCIP will be back to village and inside of them on June twenty-eighth, alongside the mental library's fantastic development. Council members will once again hand out airlocks, water, and public good ways. GCIP also discussed logistics for staffing table at the Fourth of July, and the park district, and adding past years. As well as additional country during the Fourth of July raid in the park conference room at Village Hall, to allow those to need to take time away. In the way, people during the parade. The council discussed the food matter during Planko Alprats votes. Combined them at Ryder Theater, it's been ninety-nine on July eleven. They also decided, finally, getting to know the part, Planko articles are back. With an important piece on staff member, Planko village staff member, Sara. The next regularly scheduled meeting, just to see on the evening center.
Thanks for that report, next up is the preservation commission, trustee Yatra is our representative.
Thank you. The preservation commission did hold a meeting on May sixth. The topic of conversation was preparing for a meeting tonight with the village board. They also conducted an advisory review and provided support for a local landmark potential application. To advance to become a full landmark status at six thirty Washington Street. And the architect's name, and original architect's name is Ralph Byrne, has done. Three homes here in Planko, and a number of things up in Lake Forks. And next meeting is scheduled for June third.
Thanks for that report, don't leave, the next report is the tree commission in front of Yatra, could you call our representative?
Yes, the tree commission meets every other month, so it's been a while. Back in April, they met, I believe, on the fourteenth. They have been busy, though, revealing particular codes as they apply to the village related to trees. And also during the highlight, perhaps I think, was celebrating Arbor Day with a tree planting ceremony on May second at West School. With help of the garden club at the school. It was a wonderful event, and they also, club also gave us a tour of their mini community, community garden in the side of the school. And next meeting will be on May twenty-seventh, in Village Hall.
Thanks for that report, that concludes reports of committees. Next item on the agenda is report to the office, the first up is the village manager's report, so I'll run over the village manager, Ralph.
Thank you, President, good evening, certainly hundreds of the board and public have participated this evening. Just a few items to update you on tonight. The first two are, and I'm going to ask our college works director, Monica Sarna, to come forward and give a brief update. First relates to our Dundee Road Water Main Project. You recall that this was approved by the board back in March, and work began earlier this spring. It's actually progressing pretty well, and Monica's going to give a quick update on that. Followed directly by some updates to pedestrian crosswalks that are coming up through the community this spring and summer. Something called a rapid rectangular flashing beacon, so I'm going to turn it over to Monica about that.
Thank you, and thank you for saying the one on the part, you are a part of these, so I'll back it up. Alright, so the first update is on the Dundee Water Main Replacement Project. As you all know, this is a very significant water main replacement going through our main access to town on Dundee Road. We're nearing completion of these, we want just as less of luck to Greenwood. We've reached a significant milestone this week by having prep that's even newly wired and installed. And so the remaining work on phase one will be to transfer all the services and work on restoration. We are planning on moving over to phase two at the beginning of summer break, which is the start of June sixteen. In this phase, we're going to be seeing one more destruction to happen. So during phase one, most of the water mains installed in the direction, or we saw them impacts to the chat. Beginning with phase two, we will expect a full closure of none need in both directions, agreed with Vernon. This will be during working hours. During evenings and weekends, we will have a single main closure. This is because we are opening the road to install new water. So during evenings and weekends, we will continue to allow eastbound traffic to traverse through the north lane. And reversing the flow of traffic there, but we will have detour set up for westbound traffic and allow eastbound traffic to continue to move through. The purpose of this is to avoid having semis coming up, you know, it was. We have been coordinating with the school district, park district, Shalons, and the homeowners to prepare them from the construction impacts in phase two. That, any questions on the Dundee Water Main project?
Well, the north, south, or northwest, will Vernon be closed within a certain time, or?
During certain times, yeah, the, the.
That, or something, yes.
How long is phase two again?
We're hoping that the segment can work, and phase two will be wrapped up at ten, it starts. I would say the whole road closure from Greenwood to Vernon will likely last from June first of last.
Not to get too grand, but some of the places right there. So you can go eastbound, it's great to send trucks that way, what if they're coming back, like, how are you going to direct trucks? Because people are already bomb through the neighborhood, that's right. How are you going to keep like a giant semi rolling down like sunset? You know, how, when you direct them down to like Full Felder via Wesley, or how are you going to? How are they going to do it, I guess?
I put the signage along Green Bay, we wanted to try to drive them to access, even to the lake boat power. Was that answering your question?
It's going to, I hope it works, it's going to be a team member, public safety is going to be engaged, and, you know, responding. And keeping an eye out to make sure that vehicles are where they're supposed to be, recognizing that it's going to be a busy summer of construction. With Forest Edge getting started as well, with the clubhouse project getting underway. So we're, we're kind of, we're buckling up for a lot of enforcement work, and as much signage as possible. This is why we talk about this again. It's, we continue to have complaints I received really this week relative to speeding, distracted driving, issues to out of town. We are going to continue to push awareness building around appropriate speed throughout the community. The construction work zones are not necessarily helping that, but it is an issue that we're very well aware, public safety is very engaged in. We have a series of speed signs that are going to be rotating throughout areas, we're getting those complaints. It's going to be a full-on effort, but we're going to need the community to participate and cooperate as best as they can. We never like to give out tickets, public safety will always seek compliance, or we seek to give ticket, but. Traffic enforcement is going to be something that we're going to be taking very seriously this summer, so. It's, it's something that we just want the community to be well aware of, we're going to be able to do what we can to direct traffic where it needs to go.
You have one more recommendation, and I'm sure we already have communicated some of this to school, but it will be summer season, like. Kids kind of go to walk, you know, riding their bike, maybe we'll just move them to work, through the park district, the school, or the summer school, or the central school. Maybe even through the private camp companies that completely have a high good lessons. And people figure it out after a week, but that course will usually be a little bit. Producing for some people that aren't, that aren't eating, aren't eating.
Correct, yeah, we, we have for the, you know, the park district on summer, you know, trying to find out. So, and we coordinated with the school just right, but hopefully we're getting ahead of it.
Hopefully, thank you.
Alright.
Well, we're going to, we're going to add a lot.
But the next one is update on our RFD installation. Our village group recently, recently installed our first one, Tudor Coral Crossing of Green Bay Road. Scobly Seemix had a positive interaction with the drivers and pedestrians at that crossing. We have four more that are going to be installed, you know, those are at Love and Lundy, Vernon Avenue in Green Bay, which is at the center here. Lincoln Avenue and Old Green Bay Road, where we're doing pedestrian crossing improvements to add a pedestrian around that intersection. And also South Avenue in Green Bay Road. Some of these intersections, they look familiar, because we have, you know, underground construction, construction at these intersections. And so the installation of these are, like, these have to be coordinated at that work. But we expect that the installation of, of all these will be installed for us. Any questions on these?
Just a quick reminder of these, this is something we've talked about for a bit, and our package transportation plan recommended replacement of several of these. We augmented some of that, added a few in an effort to create better and safer process, particularly across Green Bay Road. And taken that Tudor report, that's typically it's not that, that's an area to receive a lot of requests for this sort of year, so excited to see this happen. They are pretty interesting, and if you haven't seen the one at Tudor, it's, it's more dramatic than all of the rest of them. We'll have one other like it, that it not only has the rapid flashing beacons, it also has flood lighting. That will illuminate entirety of the crosswalk. That particularly dark crosswalk at night, it is kind of issue that we're glad to finally addressing. And it is a little bit like a rough name. When it's lit, it's on a timer, so it doesn't stay lit very long, or all solar. And we're excited to do the community to start these, just the general improvement that built the vibe to pedestrian safety. I have a vote of presence to say that.
I am excited about this one, I've been for ages, we've been trying to put this in for a while. The flashing, the flashing complete, you know, got part of it, and got a part was there, I'm very excited to see it. We think it will save lives, because it's a pretty bright name for us, and we're good, so keep it up.
We are planning to do some, some significant public information around how these work and that they'll be. Communication managers have panels working on that, it's Monica hurting, and we will continue to share that information, including. Trying to include additional signage to for those pedestrians, so that they can use it.
Yeah, they are push-button activated, so I think some temporary communication signage is going to draw pedestrians attention that they actually have to press the button to activate.
Are you concerned at all that if people are dispelling others who press the light, or press the button, that that light is telling you not to go out in the lower intersection?
I don't know what the timing is for the lighting, I think it's, I think it's on sixty-second or seventy-five second.
Yeah, so it could be that we'll have to reactivate, especially I think if you're thinking about like red, there just is events. But hopefully at that point, you know, the cars will have stopped, they're slowed down, see.
But I was thinking more, who's the light though?
Yes, yeah.
No, it's a good point, I think part of what, you know, if we ease entities and the community gets more comfortable with that, we may look at augmenting some of them. Lengthening the sun, and keeping others a little shorter, they're a shorter block here, a lot of space. But yes, I'm glad to see these mining, thanks.
Any question?
Yeah.
Of the staff, what is the speed limit during Tudor Report?
Uh, it's thirty-five miles.
Thirty-five?
Along Green Bay, do we?
On Green Bay, yeah, it would be safe if we knocked it down to thirty, it's a minute.
Green Bay is third.
Green Bay is third.
And that, that, yes.
Okay.
In the zone, three, this, through the middle, I think, it's a third. As you go further west, it goes all the way up, actually further north, it goes all the way up to forty, and you don't rush late the road. But yes, it's thirty to the center.
Yeah, I'm just reading recently the plan, another tree about speed kilts, and maybe they're exploring knocking that down under the five trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Just a couple other quick items, and I've got duties that are a little bit different order, I'm going to, I'm going to jump to special events, because there's actually quite a bit coming up. And I just want to get dates in folks' minds, this is already been mentioned, but coming up on Monday, we've got a pretty exciting day in the village. We commence a long way to reconstruct the Planko Golf Clubhouse. This is going to be marked with a groundbreaking ceremony that will take place at the golf course at six twenty-one Wesley, beginning at nine thirty AM. Can't wait to get this project started, you've seen demolition is complete relative to the whole clubhouse, and. We're looking forward to introducing the community crew to this process, recognizing that the construction process is going to be somewhat complicated. And we want to make sure that we're also communicating how to deal with that, and how we are, you know, that's a look for lots of information. Through the coming weeks and months to share timelines and work that we're doing. The annual memorial day ceremony takes place at Veterans Memorial Park on Monday, May twenty-sixth at eleven AM. This is done in partnership with the Golden Hall Historical Society, and the event includes a historical program and recitation of names of those that were lost in service to our nation. So we do encourage everyone in the community to attend and participate, it's really a wonderful ceremony. Several of those in the village board were participating in that, in that event. Trustee Neil Allofs mentioned this, but it's word repeating, our don't hit recycle drop off mess, which is hosted by the sustainability task force on Saturday, May thirty-first. From ten AM to one PM in the southeast unit lot. We have tons of information about what's accepted on the village website and shared on social, so hopefully everyone's got a chance to see that, but we'll continue to push that. On Monday, June second, at five PM, we have an open house being hosted at Ryder Theater. Get feedback and input from the community relative to the studies that we've been doing on downtown parking and our streetscape enhancements. So this is just, there will be a formal quick program, but really it's a drop-in event. and our streetscape enhancements. So this is just, there will be a formal quick program, but really it's a drop in event. Opportunity to talk with our consultants and the staff about ideas that have been brought forward and ways to perhaps enhance the parking in the downtown, enhance the streetscape, and find ways to manage our parking differently, recognizing that is a common problem. Our anticipation is that there will be a discussion with the Village Board at the June nineteenth committee of the whole meeting as kind of a first step and then coming back to board in August with final recommendations. So if you're available on June second, please keep ready at the theater at five o'clock. And then last but not least, in this one, I just want to offer a reminder. Our annual spring cleanup day event takes place on Saturday, June seventh. It's a little later this year than it normally is. So the reason I know that is we are creatures of habit. We have a lot of residents who have started clearing out the garages already in anticipation of cleanup day. We do ask that you do not put items out this soon. Usually is we accommodate it during the beat of that event. So we ask that if you've already placed all of your items out there for collection that you perhaps gave back to your garage door, that you just leave the way putting this out at first, it'll be good June seventh. But that there is plenty of information about what is acceptable to place at the curb and what is not. I get this question all the time. No, you can't put hazardous materials, household hazards, hazardous materials. No, you can't put electronics. Those items won't be collected, but we have recycling options available for you at the Village Public Works Garage. And so all you have to do is give us a call and I'll be out of those things, but they can't be collected. Okay, I just wanted to also make mention of the fact, as the board will recall, last month, there were a series of proclamations that the board approved. And that's because May is the month that we celebrate our municipal employees and virtually every aspect of the work that our staff does. May fourth was International Firefighter Day. The week of May fourth through the tenth was Public Service Recognition Week. The week that we're currently in, May eleventh through the seventeenth is National Police Week. And in fact, today is National Police Officer Memorial Day. And next week, the eighteenth through the twenty fourth is National Public Works Week. So it's a great opportunity. We try to celebrate what our staff does every day. But it's a great opportunity to see one of our employees, way that they thank them for the work that they do. We're grateful for them, everything that they provide to the community. We know how valued it is and how grateful the community is for it. They don't do it for the recognition of this next set of waves and impacts. And the last thing I want to mention is I've got a person sitting in way back the room who isn't an employee yet, but he's going to be very soon. And some of you may recognize him in the next panel hall. He is going to be our new assistant village manager starting Tuesday, May twenty seventh. We asked that I would be available to, he comes to tonight's meetings just to get himself started and aware of the items that we're working through. I'm thrilled to welcome Adam back. He was with the village from twenty fifteen year twenty nineteen. As an annual analyst in our public works department, has been working at the village a while as their assistant public works director since. And we're thrilled to welcome him back. Thank you for making the time to be here tonight. We'll suitably embarrass you at the chief of board meeting as well. And with that, that's all I have for the night. Report this evening. Let's start our questions.
Thanks for that. Welcome, Adam. I think Adam will be our staff liaison preservation commissioner. So he got immersed at our, at the whole meeting preservation. Next item on the agenda is the village's president for reports. We have two items, two propositions. One proposition declaring June five month in Glencoe, another one declaring June nineteenth as June teeth. The village of Glencoe, the propositions have been circulated before, published online. And unless there is a question, is there a motion to approve the two proclamations? Second, it's been moved and seconded all in favor of the two proclamations. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that have been published online with the community and they've been reviewed by the board individually, together as part of the whole process. But we don't think they warrant any further public discussion. Unless somebody wants to pull one of these off the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we need a roll call vote for this.
Trustee Hallwitz.
Yes.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Malavos.
Yes.
Trustee Underdon.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries the consent agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is regular business. First, a public hearing in consideration of resolution. We got the twenty twenty five updated to the village's structural housing plan. And first we got the air. A public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing now. Now, our development services director, Taylor Basher, for Jack.
Hey guys, good morning. I'm Stuart. This is an update to the village's existing four thousand plan. It was last updated in twenty twenty. Probably has to be updated in five years, so. But it's, yeah, right now. Affordable housing, this is a bond out of state, this housing that is not within thirty percent of actual income or somewhat of eighty percent of our. And the goal by the state is that percent, we've been slowly upwards over the last ten years.
And municipal grocery service. And I'll ask our deputy village president, CFO.
Thank you. As we have talked about the for eight and five years, these several times. Uh, it may have been right to wait for a state of Illinois. But a proposal included a post elimination of state ride grocery pass. Uh, to be effective January for twenty twenty six. This motion only impacted municipalities. Uh, this tax has historically collected by schedule and money both on groceries. And then subsequently distributed to municipalities. Um, state line were anticipating that this is a loss in ready for municipalities of three hundred and twenty five million dollars. The projected loss for the village of Glencoe will be between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand in January. When we discussed the uh, committee of the L E in February, which was directed by the committee before the inclusion of the. Only to replace the running that with loose. So it was a one percent, it's a one percent grocery tax at the end today, and one percent would be implemented January first, twenty twenty six. So residents would not necessarily see an impact uh, from the sound of January. And right, but right now we lost the village of Glencoe. Uh, including about a proposal, we see the right number three for a state tax. Uh, the proposal before you this evening is just to again replace what was logged. Uh, and good news, the department of revenue and tax is willing to pay any collection fees to administer this task for us. Well, there's a proposal for it, even in the cabinet. Uh, I think headlines is October first for a January twenty twenty implementation, or if we want to make. We could violate a first priority, why I wanted implementation. Yeah, several are surrounding in America, counting the farming, what is the tax, the state of Park, during ten million, how many, how many states, here in Ohio, and high bloods. And several other municipalities in this area are considering adoption, including when that had more killed pretty, no, for the story. We are recommending adoption early in the year to make sure that the sort of this process, which you're in the A committee and now being put out one way, and many of this path. And maybe you're anticipating the department around you being fairly overwhelmed today. Uh, so we are recommending adoption early on in this year, just to make sure that this process is in the kind of. And I have to answer any question.
Any questions from the board? If not, let me say, uh, for the venue of those here. These do not temporarily impose taxes. It goes toward a spot about this at great length already in public meetings. Uh, uh, I think we're basically doing what. Call our agent committee, which is trying. And saying a relative mutual situation. Uh, with that, is there a motion to approve the uh, grocery tax ordinance?
Some move. Then.
Uh, it's got moves, it's seconded, let's have a go call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee listener.
Yeah.
Trustee Malavos.
Yeah.
Trustee Hunter.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yeah.
Motion carries, can the grocery tax ordinance is approved? Next item on agenda, other business, is there any other questions? If not, this is an unusual meeting. Uh, because of the head of department. Uh, that when we come back, the guest characters will change. This is the last meeting. So, in order to practice that, uh, is there, I'll ask for a motion to recess. Uh, temporarily for part two of the meeting. Uh, is there a motion?
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
They move, it's seconded, all favor say aye.
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 Uh, motion carries, we are temporarily recessed, but don't go anywhere, it will be bad.
At this point, we are going to do the formal square ending uh, for the village president and the two trustees. Who are here, uh, visiting this for trustee Griffin on Monday night at the finance. So, I ask for the only step down, uh, trustee Hunter, you will be after Howard Gale, you place that back. And like, what do we call you? What do you have? Who's taking pictures?
Paige.
Where is, where is, uh, because they're doing what I'm missing. I'm glad you know, in the future. All right, Howard, if you will, please raise your right hand for Pete Allen.
Hi, Howard J. Roll.
Hi, Howard J. Roll.
Having been elected village president, having very often been a pro in the village of Glencoe and county of Glencoe, the state of Illinois. The village of Glencoe, the county of Glencoe, should be moved on. Do solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I would support the constitution of the United States, but I should hope that she can be ready to choose. And the constitution of the state of Illinois. That is, and that I would faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village president. And faithfully discharge duty of office of village president for the best and most, fresh reminder that they have.
Anyway, just.
So, now, Howard, if you will, just say. And like, of the first, should I, that all of this is there, how long, how long? That's the answer.
Yeah, repeat. I see your name. Having been duly elected village trustee, in the new year, the last. In the village of Glencoe and county of Glencoe, the state of Illinois. State of Illinois, say, solemnly swear, that I would support the constitution of the United States, and I would support. Constitution, state of Illinois. That I would faithfully discharge, faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee. That I would faithfully discharge. President of the department, which is that.
It's a fact. It's a fact. It's a fact. I got.
When we have to ask you. I favor next. Having been duly elected village trustee.
Having been duly elected village trustee.
In the village of Glencoe and county of Glencoe, state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
Sowland swear.
Sowland swear.
That I would support the constitution of the United States.
That I would support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
Constitution of the state of Illinois.
That I would faithfully discharge our duties of the office of village trustee.
That I would faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee to the best.
That it was not.
Okay.
Well, we've had a little change. The character says change. And so what I can do is, uh, we can be, uh, call our previous recessed meetings order. Uh, village president, proud of your role call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Malavos.
Here.
Trustee Hunter.
Here.
Trustee Rowley.
Here.
Trustee Rubin. Trustee Scott.
Here.
President Roll.
Here. But we have four and welcome back. As I start my second term. I want to thank not only the residents who elected us in April. But also the caucus representatives provided extra service to the village. I'm honored to be entrusted again to serve the community as village president. I'm proud of what the village accomplished during my first term. We efficiently maintained and approved our membership. We maintained our high quality services and truly superb staff provided. With a combination of new cutting edge technologies such as licensed laborers, cameras and drones. And our first rate public service, public safety officers kept the village safe. We kept our nighttime business district vibrant, made changes to improve it. We began to address our century old, century old water plant and water system. Uh, which will continue to be focused for village board. And rather than kicking them down the road, we addressed two difficult long term issues. That will set our community up for success well in the future. The century old clubhouse, the football bamba, and home rule. Both of these are residents who have represented for. As I start my second term, I give your attention to how I approach, and how I will approach the job as president. So here's what I would do. And by the way, I think you'll find agreement on board with all of these points. First, firstly, all those government decisions require common sense, not the yell. So I'll continue to make interconnect sense, not irrational decisions. Second, I'll continue to insist that the village treat its residents and its employees with courtesy, courtesy, empathy, and respect. As just one example, in Glencoe, the public safety officer is your friend. With the force of the village's sense bills, the imposed taxes, and sometimes the future tax. But I believe the village government exists to help our residents. So if you ask for help, more often than not, I want the answer to be yes. I know the answer can't all, and won't all be yes. But no was the negative version. Bottom line, the village will do all it can to save our residents' interaction with the village positively. Third, how I will do, and having worked for it for four years, I can assure you that we will do everything we can. To maintain the village's infrastructure and services. Some of it's a straightforward. Maintaining a street costs a lot, but rebuilding a street because it wasn't maintained might cost four times more. So it's not rocket science to conclude that it's critically important to stay current on our infrastructure. On the other thing, some are infrastructure issues, like those presented by our century old water plant. Public works garage sitting on a prime, not fair estate. These are very complicated, challenging questions. We're going to focus on the easy issues and the hard ones too. Fourth, we'll preserve what's right in Glencoe, and there's a lot of rights. We have good infrastructure, we have first rate services, we have a first state. But if something should fix or we will share with the building, anything at all. Better. We'll do our best to avoid the toxic state. Sadly, over the years, the village has, has made some. We put our public, public works garage in a prime location. We ceded to Northbrook, the Stokie Boulevard corridor, west of Deuce Expressway, which is across our grandparents' period. We turned away work for overture, team, overture team of us by watering against these buildings. Which has left us with a very vexing part of this day. All these mistakes were because the village government is too cautious or too conservative. Second, we're going to avoid so called flood needs decision making. In which the refusing, the village refuses to do something sensible. Because it's supposed to be able to create a bad precedent, hoping the flood days will show the bad. It might be precedent, never required to the village to do something this sensible. We can make the right decision not flood, and the right decision later. Finally, the village, village advances always a bit challenging. That our state's permanently precarious financial condition exacerbates the problem. Glencoe's village government accounts for only about fifty percent of your profit tax bill. But I know, we know, that that fifty percent tax is your money. We are proud of our, with our executive staff and excellent financial management, the village continues to maintain a triple A rated, the best rated possible, which saves all of us money. We are consistently strong today, as strong as we've ever been. Glencoe's business districts are vibrant, and our public values are increasing. That's good, good and bad, because that means our taxes are kind of restricted, our chair, the county said. We're going to work hard to keep all of us going. And we'll continue to do everything we can to be careful and efficient with your money. So to all residents of Glencoe, I'm grateful that you entrusted me with the second term. And I'll do everything I can to continue to be worthy of your trust. Thank you.
Not from me. Uh, next item on the agenda is appointments, uh, official village positions and to village commissions. Um, uh, and there's a word, a document, a word agenda packet. That denotes our appointments to official village positions. Uh, to the village board representatives, not the village committees. To the standing committees of the board. We've made appointments and reappointments, the committees and commissions of the village. And to affirm village manager's appointment, and the village attorney's engagement letter. All of this has been circulated to the board, and unless there are any questions, is there a motion to approve the appointments?
So moved.
There are second.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, no.
Uh, the appointments are approved. Uh, the next item on the agenda is considering the residents who have moderated our dear department, uh, trustee Gale listener. Let me say something right here. It's her last name, the village board. Illinois does not have term limits. But like all of us currently serving on the village board, Gale is nominated for Glencoe caucus party. The caucus has self opposed term limits for those of us who should affiliate that party, as Gale did. Gale is reached to term possibly. I personally think this is not official village position, but I personally think the term term limit is a good idea. But there is a cost, which we're seeing tonight, Gale, who's been a superb trustee for eight years, with. Gale, who grew up in Glencoe, went to South for elementary school, Central for junior high, Uacher High School. And then went to the University of San Francisco College, where she graduated in three years. By the, yeah. After college, Gale came back to Chicago, where she became a high risk asset at the real estate and phrase one. She also got married, started a family in nineteen eighty seven, and moved back to Glencoe. So Gale had the world's hardest job, a major demanding career and raising her children. On top of that, Gale somehow found the time and some of the energy to volunteer for Glencoe. She served on the zoning board commission, where the village was able to take advantage of her real estate expertise. Gale and I overlapped on the zoning board, I saw it, I vouch for what she did for us there. After that, for eight years, Gale served on the village board. Uh, and including the last four years, which I had the opportunity to work with Gale. During that time, during those four years, one of the most important things the village had to do was update its contract plan, which intended to guide the village's land use decisions well over the future. We made Gale the village board's representative on the planning commission, where she and the commission checkered through the project from blank paper to completion. The first new Glencoe comprehensive plan in a generation. If you would come to our meetings, and I recognize that you residents do, so I'm going to tell you about it. If you would come to our meetings, you would have seen that Gale applied thoughtful, critical, and smart eye to every decision the village board made. In addition, Gale was a tireless advocate for our meetings. By and large, Glencoe residents are happy to be a village trustee. We actually have survey data. But sometimes they aren't there. And unhappy residents sometimes go to individual trustees for help. And a fourth part of the trustee job of our event is to respond to those complaints and help the resident find resources or support from our staff. I can vouch for the fact, and the residents who come, Gale confirmed, then the resident came to Gale. She did everything she could, working with village staff and the board to help fix the problem. As Gale retires tonight, I want to say in the board. That the village of Glencoe has been very fortunate to have Gale Listner as trustee. Gale's allegiality, energy, and brains are perfect at that, and for trustee. Gale, the board will miss you, I will miss you. And not only because you're a Glencoe life for life beast. Who's been able to vouch for the fact that our central business, business district is correctly referred to as H, not N. Gale, thank you for your service. You've left Glencoe better than you found it. Although you now will have the third Thursday at every club. Third, Thursday, anything that I mean, I'm free, don't get uncomfortable. Your village reserves the right to put the arm in the wheel, complaining to your daughter. I already have some. Um, I'd like to, the village has, uh, a resolution honoring Gale, what I'd like to do is. I'll try to read it and be worthy of this. Uh, so, uh, here we present it here. This is a resident honoring trustee Gale Listner. Whereas Gale Listner, a lifelong resident of Glencoe, was elected trustee of the village of Glencoe in May two thousand seventeen. Reelected in twenty twenty, and certain distinction as a member of the board of trustees until twenty twenty five. And whereas Gale Listner, current or time as trustee, had an active role in leading the village through major initiatives. Opportunities in challenging circumstances, COVID, and pandemic. Approval of the forest there, subject, the successful red carpet for the placement of the clubhouse at the golf, Glencoe Golf Club. The approval of strategic plans, significant investments in major components of the village's infrastructure. That's most consequently, the achievement of home rule governance. And whereas Gale Listner proved her role as the board's liaison, the Sessom-Selpenny Committee contributed greatly. To Glencoe's year long celebration of its one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of its cooperation. And whereas Gale Listner proved her role as the board's liaison, the planning commission. Contributed to the updated village of Glencoe's contracts plan, all of Glencoe, the document. That through significant community outreach and engagement, includes a set of big ideas and long term visionary goals. That will guide the village's land use decisions for generations. Whereas Gale Listner, prior to her role as trustee, served on the village zoning commission and zoning board of the years. And whereas Gale Listner, in all her own roles, has consistently served the best interests of the village of Glencoe and its residents and businesses. Detailed inclusive objective and deliberate evaluation issues. And further its commitment to maintaining the quality of life of Glencoe. And whereas Gale Listner has been a thoughtful contributor to board of trustees. Discerning challenging community issues, and remaining focused on continuous improvement of the community for all who live, work, and visit Glencoe. Whereas Gale Listner gave spun selflessly for time and fulfilled the responsibilities to develop citizens in a most professional, accountable, and honorable manner. Now, therefore, we get resolved that the village president and the board of trustees of the village of Glencoe, let them like. Express on behalf of all the citizens of the village of Glencoe, their appreciation to Gale Listner on her outstanding service and commitment to the community. We have further resolved that this resolution should be spread upon evidence of this proceeding. And that an executed copy of this resolution should be signed with a signature, signature of village president. Bearing the perfect seal of the village of Glencoe, as attempted by the village clerk, he presented to Gale Listner. And signed by village president, that would be me, by the village board, which would be our village manager, Phil Groul. Gale, uh, before you come up, um. Could we have a motion? Uh, to approve the resolution.
So, I have.
That through and seconded, um. We have a voiceful, all good.
All right.
Motion carries, the rest is approved, um. I want to, we're going to give this to Gale, and I'm going to give her a chance to speak, but if, is there anybody else that wants to pile on for Gale, well, stick here. All right. Yes, we got. We got, we see, I'm spoiled, everyone on the. Anything I can tell you about. Because we're. Yeah, that's it. We.
Well, thank you so much, Howard, for such kind words, it was, it was much more than we was really expecting you to offer. And this is my last meeting with the trustee, I really want to express my gratitude to you, to all my fellow trustees. To our village manager, Bill Crowley, and Glencoe village staff, it really has been comfortable, being a trustee. And working with really such a great, impressive group. Phil, you've been, you're just the most outstanding, yeah, village manager. You know, what I really find so interesting is you have such a broad skill set. And really, I mean, so proactive in your whole approach to the community. Anticipating problems way before they actually become a challenge of what they turn into. Um, you have assembled a really, really outstanding team, um, in the profession, a lot of professionalism. And your staff is really exactly for the entire organization. I've worked with lots of different units, obviously, I go with the first of my career. This is really special, which was you've done, you know, so. Just, you know, I think Glencoe was just so, so very lucky. Um, as, as a trustee, it's really been, you know, an interesting one. I got on the board before COVID, also during COVID, and now after COVID, and we worked under two village presidents. Very live in, Howard Roman. And, you know, as for, we've accomplished so much, and I know we need to reiterate something more, because I didn't express how you. Howard, that we, we did such great things, I think, with, with the plan mission. Um, and we wrote about the law course, of how it's breaking around next week. And, um, and the fact that we got home rule, you know, voted on by our president, by our president. Point to really provide great opportunities for future boards, and more effectively address the value challenges that come with base. Um, and I really just want to thank all the, I mean, all the trustees, the staff. Um, and I really just want to thank all the, my fellow trustees, the staff and the village manager for your diligence. For your expertise, for your hard work, I really enjoy working with you. And I know that the residents of Glencoe will be well-served by your efforts to promote good governance. And continually, um, elevate the desirability of Glencoe as one of the premier communities to live, work and play. So thank you all, I really, this has been great.
There will be tape. We could definitely, don't we? Uh, thank you, Gail, uh, from the bottom, our hearts, you've been terrific, I, I know. Uh. Because of. Gail, another board member, telling me that I got. Is that some of my cohorts, other buildings. Uh, we are in luck to have this kind of village board. Uh, by the way, Michael, I don't want to overlook you, you're the new guy. Uh, that's what's saying goodbye to Gail, we're thrilled that you're here and look forward to working. If you, uh, if you've got anything for our board. So unless anybody has anything else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Let's do it here.
Aye.
The move is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry, we're adjourned, but there will be tape.
There's a tape.